Welcome. I'm Kari Aikens, a member of the Cheyenne League of Women Voters and your moderator for this forum for the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that works to help people to be engaged in their government, to be informed, and to vote. Seven candidates have filed for an at-large seat on the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees, and three candidates will be elected. Three of the candidates are with us tonight. We have Brittany Ashby, Paul Banks, and Barbara Cook. Now, our forum will begin with each candidate being given two minutes for an introductory statement, and then we will proceed to questions. For those introductions, we will start with Paul, followed by Brittany, and then Barbara. So Paul, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Well, thank you for letting us have this opportunity to have our voting community learn more about us. So I'm Paul Banks. My roots are in Wyoming. I graduated from Sheridan High School. My wife Carla was born and raised here in Cheyenne. We did spend some time in Texas where I did some teaching, and then we moved to Colorado. And it's been just about four years now that we made it back home here to Cheyenne. I received my bachelor's in elementary education from the University of Wyoming, and then I got a master's and a doctorate in educational leadership from Texas Tech University. So overall, I've been 32 years of experience in public education, serving as an elementary teacher, a principal, district-level administrator, and a school board member. And I currently serve as an educational consultant, a trainer, and a professor, helping schools and teachers across this country and even some internationally. But I know experience alone isn't enough. It's about the quality and impact of that experience. I've worked with struggling schools and led them to success. So I think I understand what it takes to have a school thrive and also what leads to their failure. You know, and I'm committed to applying this knowledge to our district, ensuring we build on our strengths and address our weaknesses. In support of our community, I'm currently involved as a board member of the Cheyenne Boys and Girls Club. I'm also a board member of the Sunrise Lions Club, I'm a board member of the University of Wyoming Library Advisory Board, and I also participate in Wyoming Hunger Initiative activities, as well as the school district's Friday Food Bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And now we'll go to Brittany Ashby. Brittany, please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Absolutely. Thank you, Kari. My name is Brittany Ashby. I currently serve on the LCSD One Board of Trustees. I'm finishing my first term. I also served in a very short fill-in term in 2018. So I'm finishing about five years on the board. I have lived in Cheyenne with my husband and two children for almost 23 years now. I move most of my adult life up here. I currently serve as the president managing director of a small consulting and program management firm here in Cheyenne called The Align Team. I have an undergraduate degree in biology that I don't use, but I do have, and I have a master's from the University of Wyoming in education, specific to adult education and learning technologies. In addition, I also am an active community volunteer and do a whole bunch of different things and have over the years. But some specific things include, I've served with United Way of Laramie County on the board and as fundraising chair with the Rotary Club of Cheyenne, I'm incoming president for the Noon Club. I've served on the Laramie County Library System Board, and I'm volunteering with a variety of other organizations around town. Combined, all of that experience gives me a very broad understanding of our community, of our families, of our kids. I also professionally bring some background with my consulting work in human resources and finance, which is really a pretty crucial piece of the governance piece of what the board does. And so between those two, I think I can really focus on both supporting the kids and supporting our educators.
Thank you, Brittany. And now on to the third candidate who's joined us for this forum. We've got Barbara Cook. Barbara, please go ahead and introduce yourself.
All righty. Thank you again for allowing us to talk about our platforms tonight with the League of Women Voters. My name is Barb Cook, and I'm a retired educator from Laramie County School District One. I taught for 21 years, and six of those years I was lead teacher. I'm a wife of a military veteran, mom of three adults, grandma of five children, three of those being students at Laramie County School District One. I've been a school volunteer for the last couple of years in my granddaughter's classroom. I'm a member of Alpha Delta Kappa, which is a professional educators sorority, and we provide college scholarships for future educators. I volunteer at Davis Hospice Center in a variety of ways, and I served on the Laramie County Library Systems Board of Directors, and I was chairperson for two years while I was on that board. I've completed a Bachelor of Science degree in education at South Dakota State University. I completed an elementary education certification program at University of Northern Colorado, and I completed a Master's of Education at Leslie University. Because my husband was in the military, we called many places home, but during that, my husband's 26-year career, but we've lived in Cheyenne now for 35 years. And having been an educator and a school volunteer, I've seen firsthand the joys and the frustrations of our current school personnel and students. And those experiences have prepared me for being a part of the Laramie County School District School Board, as well as my time spent on the Laramie County Library Systems Board. So I look forward to hopefully being able to contribute to this board in the future.
Thank you. Well, now that the introductions are done, we will dive right into some questions for each of our candidates. And for this question, we'll go ahead and have Brittany respond first, and then Barbara, and then Paul. You'll each have two minutes to respond to this question. And the first question is, what issues motivated you to run for the Laramie County School District Number One Board of Trustees? And then if you would please explain your position on those issues. Brittany, go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. I don't know that I'm going to actually take two minutes on this, but we'll see. So I, you know, have pondered this. We get this question a lot. What are the issues that drive me and to actually run? When I ran the first time and ongoing, the issue is kids, just in general. I have a real passion for our community, for our community in general, and a passion for the families. And I think in order to have a successful community, someplace where we all want to live, someplace where we're thriving and people have jobs, that we have to have a successful K-12 education system. And in order to do that, we have to have successful kids, and we have to provide them a high all of the children, a high-quality education. And in order to do that, we have to provide learning environments that our teachers and our professionals want to work in. And so I think I am able to help bring those conditions about, and so that is why I ran.
Thank you, Brittany. And now on to Barbara. What issues motivated you to run for the board, and what is your position on those issues?
Well, I say that I had 13,594 reasons for running, and that's the students in Laramie County School District One. I too, like Brittany, want to provide a high-quality education for those kids, challenging those students that are high achievers, and supporting those kids that have high needs, and all the kids in between. I want to seek policy that upholds our great school staff, using best practice in the classroom. And that seems to be a real challenge. Our school personnel, that's dwindling. Some places in colleges, they're shutting down their education departments because people aren't going into teaching. So that's an area I would really love to foster, is attracting new teachers and also keeping the ones that are there. And I want to look for ways to provide a safe and positive environment for both the teachers and our students, so that everyone can thrive in our schools.
Thank you. And now on to Paul. If you could tell us about the issues that motivated you to run?
Well, I'm very passionate, committed to providing a high-quality education to our students. And our district has a history of success, but it seems like there's recent challenges that are kind of threatening that legacy. You know, we're dealing with political groups that are looking to seize power and control the school district, to what I see is pushing kind of a narrow agenda, and they don't appear to have a good understanding of education as a whole. So they seem to be in pursuit of, in some cases, replacing our education system by limiting funding for our current schools while at the same time pushing for increased funding for charter and private schools. So I think they have us focusing on the wrong conversations. So I'd like us to focus on issues such as delivering strong core academic instruction. I will support having evidence-based instruction and curriculum materials, you know, with adequate training in literacy, math, science, social studies, you know, and have this supported by effective, multi-tiered levels of intervention. I think we need to work on our culture and climate and foster a positive culture that builds confidence and optimism in our district and creates an environment where we can attract and retain quality teachers, because right now it seems like they're trying to leave, and that's going to hurt our kids. So we need a board that supports our teachers with trust and respect, you know, and like I said, trying to address all the needs of our students. You know, we need to ensure emotional, physical, and intellectual safety of all our students and protect them from people that may not have their best interests in mind. This includes having a robust mental health support, effective behavior intervention processes, a strong, consistently enforced bully prevention policies and procedures. I guess the last thing I'd say before my time's up is just about school funding, and that we must advocate for overall adequate funding as required by our state constitution, as well as advocate for funding to restore and build new schools.
Thank you, Paul. Well, for our second question, we'll start with Barbara for a response, and then go to Paul, and then to Brittany. And the second question is, what aspects of the current district's security policies and procedures do you believe are effective? And what areas, if any, do you think need improvement to better ensure the safety of students, faculty, and staff? Barb, please go ahead.
All right. I think we have a number of security, safety issues already in place. We've got locked doors into schools. We have locked classroom doors. And I taught in a day when anybody could walk in a school. So I was sad to see it, but I do believe it's a necessity now to have locked school doors. You have to be buzzed into schools, which is another feature, a safety feature, and then screening the people that are actually coming into the school, so that people know that they're safe. Single point of entry for schools. We have SROs at secondary schools, and I think that's a real positive, so children can know police are buddies and advocates and not the mean guys. We have cameras on school campuses. We have Safe to Tell, so kids, if they hear something or see something, they need to tell somebody about that. We have different drills that the children take part in, fire drills, tornado drills. So all of that prepares kids to act responsibly when that actually might happen. However, I think some of those drills can be kind of challenging for some children. So some areas where I think they could improve on would be to support some of these kids that perhaps find some of these drills really scary. And I remember leading little kindergarteners out during fire drills, and they would cover their ears, and it was kind of scary. But some of them are, it's challenging for kids to participate in them. So maybe some type of thoughts on that. And then also, some of the safety issues come from within the schools. Some children's misbehavior has been a real problem for teachers as well as other students. So if we can address a little bit better training for teachers and then help those students that are misbehaving work in a different way. Thanks.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Paul. What aspects of the current district's security policies and procedures do you believe are effective, and what areas do you think need improvement?
Well, Barb covered it pretty good, so I'll try not to repeat everything she said, but she did cover it pretty good. I think there's a lot of pieces already in place in our district that we just got to make sure are functioning properly. And in the heat of the moment, they work as they're intended. No, but effective school, you know, security procedures focused on both preventing incidences and, you know, ensuring that rapid response if an emergency occurs. I always think we have to be realistic and acknowledge that even with considerable expense and efforts put into prevention and deterrence, if someone really wants to attack one of our schools, they can typically find a way. But we can significantly limit the number of people injured with the right preparation. So a lot of things that Barb said and then that are in the district already, you know, having that single point of entry, you know, having them present the idea. I believe we have the Raptor screening system that can alert us if there's an issue with the people coming our building, you know, the wearing the badges, making sure the classroom doors are locked during the day, you know, having surveillance systems, having adequate security cameras at strategic locations, you know, and if possible, have live monitoring. So, you know, it's not that we're going back and looking at our cameras and what's on the cameras after an incident's happened, but knows there are ways for us to have live monitoring that can kind of see suspicious behavior. So maybe we can prevent something from happening. Very supportive of the school resource officers and possibly expanding them, you know, their ability to build relationships with our students and create trust, you know, and just those strong communication pathways. I think Barb mentioned the Safe to Tell. You know, I believe strongly in quick communication, that kind of like our remind system. So our alert systems are kind of integrated, so when something is happening, the law enforcement know about it immediately, and what's going on, and that they can respond quickly. And then just a lot of training and communications that when that incident does happen, people feel prepared, they know what they're supposed to do, they know what their roles are, so everything's coordinated. And I think I might have mentioned, I guess, allow, I think my time's up. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And now to Brittany, for your thoughts on the effectiveness of current district's security policies and procedures, and where there might be room for improvement.
Yeah, I think my colleagues have talked a lot about the things that are happening. We've come a long way in the seven or eight years that I've been involved with the district. There's been a real concerted effort, both at the state level and then at the local level of really looking at the best way to secure and to respond, and look at some of that, those different things, all of the things that they talked about. Some of the areas that I can see and that I know have come up on occasion here recently include, you know, I think, how do we, having more conversation about how we talk about safety and security with our families, with our parents, with our community. You walk a really fine line, right? Because you don't want to publicize all of the procedures for people to, you know, the bad guys to get in, or to skirt around, or to necessarily cause more of an issue than you solve. But we also need, I think, to do a better job of really talking about why some of those procedures are in place, why some of the things. We have, they're still public buildings. They're still got people coming and going for ballgames, for events, and those kind of things. And some of those procedures are still in place, and people get very concerned that they can't get into any door in the building, or they can't. And so we really need to talk a little bit more about what that looks like and help people to partner with us in that security piece, because I think the biggest hole in any security plan really is human error, right? And then the other thing that I think we can really focus on is that preventative piece and doing some more work around the mental health, both mental health for kids and mental health for staff.
Thank you, Brittany. Well, we are going to take a quick pause in the questions in order to do some flash feedback. And to facilitate that flash feedback, I will give attention to Karen Meister Emrick.
Hi, thank you, Kari. And for flash feedback, we want one or two sentences about the term, maximum of about 30 seconds. So this is really flash answers. And Brittany, you're first on my list. And the term is extracurricular activities.
Well, I think extracurricular activities are a key piece of what we provide for the education. They're frequently the reason the kids stay in school. They're frequently the reason kids are able to integrate the learning that they have in the classroom. And I've been very proud of LCSD One for the variety of things they are able to offer. You know, we continually have to look at how we balance that with the funding for education in classroom education, but I think they're a key piece.
Thank you. Next, I have Paul. And Paul, I would like your term to be Teacher Professional Development. 30 seconds, a couple of sentences.
Absolutely crucial, because we have to have high-quality teachers in every classroom. And it's through high-quality training that we prepare them, so that they know how to individualize instruction, as well as have, you know, the evidence-based instruction in place all the time. So sometimes it's easy to, you know, not want to fund that training, but to me, that's one of the top priorities. And we would, we need to look at perhaps cutting other things before we cut that. If that's just a non-negotiable need, that all the teachers need to have that high-quality training to be effective.
Yeah. Okay, and next, Barb Cook. Barb, your term is cell phones in the classroom.
Karen, I think you asked her, you mean, rather than Barb.
All righty. Cell phones in the classroom, and that's a toughie, because I do think that it's a real distractor for teachers. So there's got to be, I believe, children should not have access to their phones during instruction time. And if there's a way to put them aside in a classroom, that would be a good thing, but it's such a distracting part of schools, and teachers have a real frustrating time with that. So I would say that phones should not be a part of the, in the classroom. If they're in the classroom, they should be put away so kids don't have access to it.
Thank you. And back to you, Kari.
Thank you, Karen. All right, we'll dive right back into the questions with our third question. And for this one, I'll have Paul respond first, followed by Barbara, and then Brittany. And this question is, as an at-large member, you would represent all of Laramie County School District Number One. So what methods would you use to engage with the school community on key issues? Paul, you have two minutes.
Sure, thanks. So, yeah, effective community engagement is crucial for school members that try to promote, you know, it fosters transparency, trust, and collaboration between the school district and the community. You know, so one thing that I definitely want to do is hold regular community meetings and forums, such as, you know, like town hall meetings or coffee hours at different parts in the community. So go where they're at, not, you know, you don't necessarily want to do it on school property, but go somewhere kind of neutral or more comfortable, you know, and have these different meetings, target different audiences, different stakeholder groups. You know, you could have some for parents, some for students. You might have some teacher advisory groups. And then I think it's very important to have presidents, having presence at school community events, football games, or, you know, showcases that the schools are having, just making sure you're present as much as you can, and showing people that you're accessible, that you want to talk to them, that you want to hear their feedback, and then that you'll take that feedback and those conversations seriously. I always enjoy school visits, and I think it's important for school board members to visit schools regularly, again, so they can build those relationships with the administrators or the teachers, but then also see firsthand about what's going on in the classrooms and seeing the progress that they're making. That, you know, we sit in board meetings and talk about all this, but talking about it in a school board means much different than actually going into a school and seeing these things actually happen. I think social media can still be powerful, a way to communicate with your followers. And then I just think being, creating a lot more transparency during our board meetings. And I don't think it should be our goal to have board meetings be as quick as possible, but those board meetings are, you know, events where we can really go deeply into questions and discussions and presentations, you know, around our strategic plan, or our new curriculum, or instructional issues, you know, just ask those tough questions of our superintendent, and have meaningful discussions that, again, help our community understand what we're doing.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we'll go to Barb. As an at-large member, what methods would you use to engage with the school community on key issues?
Well, I agree with Paul, much, much the same. I would like to go into each school and see just all the great work that these teachers are doing. When I had told some people as I've been running that I'd like to get into the schools, I've had comments back to me, "It's so good that you'll be going into the school." So I want to see those, help the teachers celebrate some of the things that they're doing. I too would like to attend school events, speak with students and parents and staff, and I'd like to foster a mutually respectable, a respectful interaction between all stakeholders. It was interesting, the other day at the school board meeting, to listen to one of the students and what they thought. And I think sometimes we bypass students, and they have lots of input, lots of credible input that we could learn from them. And then also, while I've been campaigning, I've had people ask me questions about this or that, and I've tried to thoughtfully respond to them. So if I don't know answers, and I'm not going to know them all, I've sought out the help from, I've called principals, I've called my minister, I've called lots of different people just to get input. So I would be making a good, I would be responding to them in a positive way, answering their question.
Thank you. And now over to Brittany. What methods would you use to engage with the Laramie County School District Number One community on those key issues?
Sure. And I think being out and being visible is the best way to be able to get feedback and talk to people. And it's also probably, this realm of being a board member is probably the hardest part of being the board member, is because everybody believes something different. They may or may not believe you're listening to them, based on the decisions you make. But, you know, I always try to be very open. Many of you know that I am out in the community pretty much 24/7, and I'm always willing to have a conversation on what we're doing, what that looks like. I have tried to be in as many schools as possible, which is sometimes easier said than done, because we are a pretty good-sized district, and being in all 37 school buildings in a year is a little tricky. I have been in all of them at some point in the last four or five years. But trying to get into and see the work of the teachers, the work of the kids, is, I think, a key piece of doing that. I think the other piece for me is really trying to support some of the communications work that the district is doing, because a lot of times, the questions that I get are not necessarily board questions, but operational questions. And so helping the school or in the admin and the different schools get their information out and tell their story. We've had a lot of change in that, and over the last few years as well, whether that be through PR. We've done, we've changed how we do 45-day policy, apps, things are going out on remind a lot more than they used to. We've had focus groups for materials reviews, things like that. And I think continuing to push for some of those is really helpful as well.
Thank you. And now on to our final of the formal questions, and we'll have Barbara respond to this one first, followed by Brittany, and then Paul. And here's this question. In the 2022-23 school year, state standardized test results showed that less than 50% of Laramie Number One 10th graders were proficient in math, science, and English. So as a board member, what would you support to improve those proficiency levels for Laramie County School District Number One students? Barbara, go ahead.
So this is a real multi-level answer. We need to attract and retain skilled educators in order to be in our, each classroom. We need to find good curriculum that would best support our state standards. And then we need to, grade by grade, have grade by grade learning expectations. So it's sequentially taught. Skills are taught from grade to grade to grade, so that we can build upon the skills that a student had learned one year on to the next. And then when students are tested, those results should lead to some interventions. So teachers should have access to the test results, and then they can tweak their education, educating the students or the process that they're doing this, so that they can better address some areas that perhaps their students did not do so well on student tests. And I think also, we need to teach test-taking skills, because there are skills to utilize while you take these standardized tests. So we need to address that. And then also, if they could have days, like if you have a test, to not have another test right the very next day, because I sometimes think there can be test fatigue. So if you can space out some of the tests when you administer them, that might also help with some of these test scores. But probably the most important thing is to take the test results that you have given your students, and then analyze your teaching, so you can tweak it a bit, so you can better meet the needs of your students.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Brittany. And now we'll go to Brittany for how you would support improving the math, science, and English proficiency for Laramie County School District Number One students.
Yeah, I agree with Barb in that I I think this is sort of a multi-level kind of gig here. And you've actually already heard Paul talk a little bit about the different, making sure we have best practices in the classroom, things like that. But I think there also needs to be some conversation at the trustee and community level. Because I think we get very stuck on test scores as a as an overall level, as overall assessment rather than just, as Barb talked about, a way to kind of improve that education piece at the at the at the classroom level. And I think having some additional conversation about what does it mean for those kids to be successful. The state has done some work in different areas, refining standards and, you know, talking about what, you know, the qualities of a graduate. And not sure we've spent much time talking about what that means and how that really applies to our district and our schools beyond those those testing standards. But beyond that, regardless of how we're measuring success, you know, the key piece really is our educators. And we can, we can do all sorts of different curriculums, all the sorts of different materials to support it. But if our teachers are not well-trained, if they don't have the sports and the resources they need to do the job, we, you know, we're not going to get very far. The materials can't teach themselves. And so really, to me, it's continuing to focus on how we identify those gaps in in teacher sports and teacher knowledge and and how we then work to remedy those those pieces.
Thank you, Brittany. And now on to Paul for your thoughts on how you would support improvement in math, science, and English proficiency.
Well, first, I just kind of a word of caution, you know, looking at one percentage score of proficiency and making sure we build a context around that and really understand what that score means. It kind of reminded me when I first started teaching in in Texas and our literacy scores across the state were very, very low and everybody's wondering what's wrong with their schools, why can't our kids read? And and then some important elections were coming up and and they recalibrated the test. And the very next year, we had extremely high proficiency scores. So nothing else really changed, but for some reason, we had low proficiency readers and the very next year, we were through the roof. So we just need to build a context around those scores and and understand the root causes of where those scores are coming from. But I do have some concerns about the current levels of academic achievement. You know, but raising student achievement is very complex, you know, system-wide efforts starting pre-K, all the way through our system. You know, to me, it's starting, you know, focus on the classroom. Again, having a great teacher in the classroom, recruiting top-quality teachers and and training them adequately and putting the right materials in their hands. You know, but I also think that that leadership needs to have a strong commitment and capacity to strengthen and support the work of the teachers in the classroom. They need to understand what good instruction is. They need to understand the realities of what teachers are going through every day. And again, have the skills and the commitment to support those teachers the way they need to be supported. You know, I think there's be a laser focus on utilizing the most effective evidence-based instructional strategies. You know, we have a lot of educational research that tells us what strategies work. So let's focus on those and make sure teachers are very skilled. Having high expectations with accountability. You know, we need to be optimistic but realistic at the same time. You know, we need to have careful consideration on how we we create sustained change in ways that work reasonably for competent, committed people, not just for superheroes. And taking into account the the real daily demands of educators. And again, just having a culture and climate that supports continuous growth and success. And we're building trust and confidence in our schools, engaging parents in that educational process.
Thank you. Well, before we get to our closing statements, we have one more round of flash feedback, so I'm going to send it back to Karen Meister Emrick.
Thank you. And the first person I'm going to be asking to talk about this, the term that I have for you, Barbara, is vocational training.
I think it's a real important area for our schools to look into vocational training. Lot of, some of the kids will not be going on to college and that's a reality. So if we can have some vocational training in the high schools and then put some of these high school students out into our community so that they can learn some of these trades a little bit better and perhaps get credit in school. It would be a real win-win situation and it would foster a relationship between students and prospective employers. So vocational education to me is a real important aspect of our schools. And we need to to promote that.
Thank you. Okay, next, I have Brittany. So Brittany, your term is school discipline.
School discipline. So I'm not sure if we're talking about the school itself or the children within the schools. But, you know, one of the issues that we continue to see and continue to have conversations about is behavior. We've seen behavior that has continued to ramp up. This is not unique to Laramie One. It is an issue that we're seeing across the country. And so I think we need to continue to have conversations about how we support and and work with that behavior in the classrooms or appropriately deal with the situation so all the children have the opportunity to learn.
Thank you. And Paul, the term that I have for you is mental health. And I'm referring to students.
There's some mental health. It seems to be increasing and, you know, so we need to figure out some of those root causes and build collaboration with the parents. So we try to prevent these upfront, but then I strongly we need to increase our mental health support. You know, training and how to identify it early, having the right interventions in place to try to get the students on track. You know, how to create situations where where they can be safe and some of the students around them can be safe. Yeah, so this is an area that it just continues to grow. And we need to address, we need to put the proper resources in place so that there's there's training for our teachers to identify it and then work with those students effectively.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And back to you, Kari.
Thank you, Karen. Well, now we will wrap up this forum by hearing closing statements from each candidate. You'll each have two minutes. And we'll go to Brittany first, then Paul, and then Barbara. So Brittany, please give us your closing statement.
Absolutely. Well, first, I really do want to thank you all for continuing to do this. I've participated with the League of Women Voters each of the other times I've run, and I think this is a really nice forum. It was in person the first time I did it, and then we've moved. And I think this is a really easy way to get information out. But, you know, I just want people to know that I am very excited to run again. I think we've made some great progress at Laramie One. I think there are some gaps and some issues we need to continue to address, including that recruiting and retention of high-quality teachers and figuring out where the gaps are for morale and retention. Continuing to work on how we have equality in buildings and in learning environments across the district. For that matter, across the state. We have old buildings and we need to figure out how we are are dealing with those. We need to make sure that we are focusing on how we deal with that behavior in the classroom as well as, you know, Laramie One has struggled with our special ed services. You know, something has happened over the last ten years. And we have put some pieces into place recently to try and address that and make sure that we're providing the highest quality services for those struggling kids. But I think we need to continue to focus on that as well. And I, you know, really, the ball boils down to, we need to focus on all the kids and how do we provide the highest quality education for all kids. And I think I bring a depth of knowledge, breadth of connection, and some pieces that can really be beneficial moving into the future.
Thank you, Brittany. Next, we'll go to Paul for your closing statement.
And thanks for having us. This has been a great opportunity to share my thoughts and also hear from my colleagues. So this has been good. So, you know, I firmly believe that for a thriving community, we have to have a thriving educational system with our kids, not some kids, but all kids. You know, so I hope I have the opportunity and get elected so I can kind of roll up my sleeve and start getting some of this work done, starting in November. You know, I'm thinking forward, four years after, you know, that I'm on the board. You know, I'd like to see a community that's very optimistic and proud and supportive of our school district. You know, I'd like to have us have significantly improved student achievement and and have a very positive climate that supports teachers and and support staff, so they're excited to come to work each day. I'd like us to achieve creating a safe and nurturing school environment for all students without bullying and and the other behavior problems that are going on right now. You know, so my greatest strength is, I've been doing this work for over thirty-two years. And I have a track record of success with some very struggling schools. And that I can bring my knowledge and experience to the school board to try to help our district. You know, and in in reading some of the notes, we're talking about bringing civility to the process as well, because things are kind of getting kind of hostile. And it shouldn't be that. I kind of want us to return to a time where we had some shared values around education and what it meant to to nurture our kids and raise our kids. You know, so we need to lead by example, demonstrate respectful communication during our meetings. You know, practice active listening, acknowledging viewpoints, you know, not attacking each other, facilitating open dialogue that has, you know, discussions and conversation with our entire community so they know they're being heard. Yeah, it's overall want to want to move this district forward, help all of our kids and have a district be a kind of a district of choice for for parents, students, and teachers. So I look forward to the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Paul. And now we'll go to Barb. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
So if elected, I would try very hard to support the educators in our schools. And to do this, I would make sure that there was open communication between schools and administrators. I would like to also foster a little bit better training for our staff. So when they deal with some of the emergency situations with, which some of our, one of our high schools had to do this week. But it was kind of a challenging situation. So I'd like to perhaps tweak that training for the staff, find ways to, again, attract new teachers and retain the ones that are already there. And this is a really vitally important election. For the past two years, some of our board members have brought forth outside political divisive problems to the board. So instead of actually dealing with problems that are in our schools, they've kind of distracted. And and the board hasn't been able to deal with some of those problems that are actually in our schools. So if elected, I'd bring a positive energy to the board and my experiences as an educator and as a mom and a grandparent and a volunteer. I believe that I would be able to seek collaborative ways to solve some problems. And lastly, I'd love to to say, I'm really proud, our Chamber of Commerce, we, all three of us, Paul, Brittany, and myself, received the Chamber of Commerce's endorsement for this school board election because we believe in transparency, collaboration, and respect for all stakeholders. And we just want to see quality education experiences for our teachers, administration, school staff, parents, but most importantly, children. Thanks for having us tonight.
Well, thank you, Barb, Paul, and Brittany for joining us for this forum. And thank you voters for your interest. On behalf of the Cheyenne League of Women Voters, remember, your vote is your voice.